All right, we'll call tonight's meeting to order for Tuesday, October 9th. And as we start out every meeting, we'll read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jennifer Winn.
Medora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Alard.
Okay. Public comment. Moving on. Correspondence. And we do have a school gift fund amount. And this is a big one. So we will eventually need a motion here. We have a total donation of $13,000, which breaks down to $5,000 from the Norfolk PTO for end-of-year surplus donation. That's for Freeman. Another $5,000 from Norfolk PTO for end-of-year surplus donation for HOD. And then a grant that was received from DonateWell, an amount of $3,000. And that's a PPG grant, is that correct?
Yep.
So we have a total of $13,000, maybe a record for us, as far as I can tell, in donations. Do we have a motion to accept that?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the gifts as stated.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Again, fantastic generosity. Thank you to all.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Motion passes. Or all in favor, sorry, I guess we should vote. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. A little ahead of myself there. All right. So then moving back. Okay. So then we can move, I guess, right into Ingrid.
Yep. So, over the course of last year, we had a couple of independent enrollment studies completed, which I've shared the results of. And with the pending 40B projects in Norfolk, we are expecting, over the next five years, to see some significant increases in our elementary enrollment. Last fall, we approached the town for funding to have some preliminary design studies done. And Bill Beatrice is here tonight from Flansburgh Architects. Flansburgh also designed the Freeman Kennedy, the original building, and is here to share with us the proposed design plans.
Sure. Thank you. And thank you, guys, for having me. What I'd like to do is briefly go over where we are in terms of the concept of what we talked about with Ingrid and her staff. As Ingrid said, we designed the original school, so we're very familiar with the building. And it was exciting to get invited to come back and look at it again. So, what we started with was preliminary program. And this spilled out of discussions with Ingrid and the staff. And the concept, through a couple of meetings, came together, that, you know, what could be developed here as an early childhood learning center. Some additional general classrooms, some special education spaces. The Early Childhood Learning Center would need to be kind of independent of the function of the main school, and we'd need some ability to lock that section off. As well as some additional, well, sped spaces, admin spaces, some additional storage, and some miscellaneous spaces. So all totaled, the program we ended up with was totaled 29,900 square feet, so 30,000 square feet. So with that in mind, we saw-
Can I just, I'm sorry, Bill, can I just jump in?
Yeah.
Real quick. The reason that we're talking about the Early Childhood Center being here is that with the projections that we have for enrollment, we are already out of space at HLAD. And we were looking to think about a way to expand in one site that would create greater capacity of both buildings. So the idea is moving all of the early childhood classrooms out, which will free up six to seven new classrooms at HLAD. And then we would get additional classrooms for the Freeman on the second floor.
Yeah. By all means, please jump in, because I'm thinking this is a little informal.
Yep.
If you have any questions, just shout them out, and we'll kind of go through them. And the one thing I do want to stress is this is preliminary, and these are very conceptual plans. And we've had a few meetings with them, but as the project progresses, if it progresses, then we will kind of, as usual, through the process, drill in on all the details. So with the program set in mind, we started looking at where would this go. And one thing to note is, when we originally designed this building through the MSBA, one of the MSBA requirements is how will you expand upon this building in the future? Because, hey, nothing is static in this world. So our original idea, way back when, was always to enclose, to connect these two wings here, and make a true courtyard out here. So what you're seeing here is a preliminary first-floor plan. These are the two wings that are out there, two classrooms. And we just continued this arc across. So the first floor, we have the pre-K spaces, seven pre-K spaces, a multipurpose space, admin, some OTPT spaces, and some staff spaces. And it would be able to be locked off, separate from the main building. There'd be a little nurse's suite, and a little satellite nurse's office in there as well. And, like I said, their own admin area, too, to act as an independent unit. So zooming in a little bit on the, this is the admin space. We do a typical double vestibule for the entry, the main entry located in the center of the arc here. There'd also be a door here that would help lock off this space as well. The theory being is, somebody comes to the, somebody comes to the school, the Early Childhood Center, they have to be buzzed into the vestibule, you know, buzzed into the main area here. And then if they need to go into the building proper, they would have to get buzzed in again here, or a card reader if they had a card. So this is some early thoughts on security.
Where's the parking for that entrance? Is there a park?
Yep. He'll go into the outside space in just a second.
Yeah, I'll go through the plans, site plan, and even some cost data.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Is there a receptionist separate for the school?
Yeah, so in the Early Childhood Center, we're also going to move the special education main offices, which are at HLAD. That gives us additional spaces. So in that admin vestibule, you'll have your two special education secretaries that will be buzzing people in and out.
Who's buzzing them in?
Yes. Yeah.
And then moving up to the potential second floors, it's basically general classrooms along the front arc. Science and maker space, another open project space, it could be another multipurpose room or multipurpose space, could be used for a variety of things. Maybe a little greenhouse in here, teacher planning rooms, additional storage as well. So it's pretty simple, pretty compact, got everything in there. And then looking quickly at the site plan, getting to your classroom. So these are the two existing wings. This is our new addition, which kind of connects these two. This road is existing, and then we're going to kick it out a little bit to create a play area for this addition.
I thought it was a pond.
And some additional park.
I thought you made a duck pond for a second. It's like, oh, that's kind of nice.
Duck pond and preschoolers.
Now you don't think it works?
Safety issue.
Very shallow duck pond?
Yeah. So again, preliminary concept, preliminary layout.
One of the things, one of the other reasons that when we, we had a space study group, and we looked at a lot of different options for how to do this, one of the other reasons for moving the preschool is that the preschool does not have lunch here, so they wouldn't need to access the cafeteria, they don't need the gym space, they don't attend specials, and their drop-off and pickup times can be staggered. So the idea would be that the parents would drive through that back and drop off to the back part of the building, and preschool starts at nine, so all our other buses would already be in. And then the pickup time is before the other buses come in. So from a traffic management, that was another reason.
So with that in mind, we sent these plans to our cost estimator. And, yeah, a number of questions which we were asking, we have a breakdown of the cost estimate. But bottom line is, in today's dollars, assuming construction start time of June 2019, for construction, construction cost only, we're looking at $12,277,059. Now, there's a big asterisk there. That is construction cost.
That is a big asterisk.
Okay? On top of that, any project would have-
Furniture.
Furniture, equipment, testing, OPM, design fees, all. Typically, we see that as 25% to 30%. So at the end of the day, we're looking at a $15,000-$16,000 project, thereabouts. Again, very preliminary cost estimating. As we move through the process, we will drill down on that estimate, start times, construction schedule, and that kind of stuff. But from where we are now, we feel pretty comfortable that cost estimate captures everything it needs at this point.
As a point of context, the total bill for this building-
Thirty something.
Wasn't it in the mid-30s?
It was 30.
Yeah.
36 or so.
Yeah, in that ballpark.
Yeah, it was like 35, 34. We got some money back, but yeah, that was the end result. And that was with furniture and everything, I believe.
It's 38 on the door, I believe.
It's 38 in total?
It's done. You heard the copy of it.
Are we anticipating hiring more staff?
Oh, yeah. This is just the building.
It's just the building.
Yeah. This is just the physical space. But we did talk to the advisory board. I shared all the estimates with them in terms of enrollment, because you're talking about classroom teaching, you're talking about additional therapists, and those are continued costs, not the one time. This is just the building structural costs for space.
In a nutshell, that's where we are.
Do all the classrooms have windows?
Yeah, all the classrooms.
They overlook the-
All the classrooms would have windows.
That's nice.
Yeah. You know, actually, that's a good point. So what we're thinking about in terms of design and finishes would be something very similar to what you have here. Meaning, like, the floors would probably be, you know, just VCT like we have out here, chipboard walls, acoustical ceilings, maybe some rubber on the stair treads like we have here, maybe some in the main first-floor area, maybe some luxury vinyl tile, I don't know. But similar, similar durable, typical construction school products. You'd see a carpet in the admin area, that kind of stuff.
Will it include wiring for all the technology, too?
Yep. Yeah. Yep, that would be in here.
So one of the other things that we looked at, again, when we were looking at options, HLAD school, we looked at the possibility of expanding there, but all of their structural systems are maxed out. And you also run into ADA compliance issues. As soon as you start building, then the entire building has to be brought up to today's code, so it's not feasible there. But we did look, can you talk a little bit about the systems here at FK? Because we did look at septic, all of those things.
Yes. We went back to our engineers when Ingrid contacted us possibly, what are the capabilities of the main systems? And by and large, everything can handle this expansion. Hot water, we might have to put additional hot water booster in this addition, only because of the distance that the water's traveling around the building. Septic system, depending on how, with the total additional population, that might need to be modified, there is a line item in that cost estimate for that, so. But in terms of the HVAC capabilities, the fire protection, no issue tying into the existing.
The water pressure for the fire hydrants.
Water pressure is fine. Yeah. We would have to do due diligence, you know, if this happens again, we'd have to do another flow test to verify that. But at this, looking at the data we had before, doesn't seem, there's no guilt breakers there.
Okay.
Bill, the roadway setup, you said you're going to have to kick that out a little bit and add that parking lot and so forth. Was that part of the, going back to when this building was originally designed, was that already in those plans, or is that going to be something separate? We're going to have to work with the abutters on to say, hey, now this is sliding your way a bit?
Yeah, that's something we're going to have to work through here. That's not part of the original design. That is all town-owned land, though, that.
Correct.
You know, that park. And there was a lot of talk when we put that road through.
Yes.
So, as you know.
Yes.
As you are aware.
And as you recall, the abutters were very engaged in the process, that's why I'm just trying to-
They were.
Okay.
They were.
And they were helpful overall, as far as like providing suggestions and so on. I mean, I think you'd agree with that.
They were. And we're not doing much different to what's there now, really. It's adding some more parking, kicking that road out a little bit, so they're used, presumably they're used to-
Right.
The traffic flow at this point.
Just, and not to get too into the weeds with this, but the various rooftop units we had, obviously, was an ongoing issue. With this design, is there, how many units are we talking about here?
We're talking one, a small one. We're looking at possibly putting it inside the building.
Okay.
For that reason.
Okay. Because I was saying, because now you're right there, and that could definitely be an issue.
Right. And we're also thinking, maybe, you know, the actual mass of this building, too, maybe might help.
Okay. Shield it that way?
Might help shield the existing units, but that's hard to tell at this stage.
Okay.
And there's no state.
We have been told that MSBA would not fund an expansion project. Then, and they were pretty clear on that, correct, Bill? Now, Matt had heard from MSBA that they might consider it, but I've gotten pretty clear guidelines from them that they do not fund additions and expansions. But we would certainly try to apply and see if they would consider it.
Say it's no.
But they, I know when we built the Freeman, you couldn't even add a classroom based on future projected enrollment. You could only base your building design, or they wouldn't fund reimbursement for the extra spaces. There were two classrooms here. We had to fight with MSBA-
That would last forever.
-to make them reimbursable. So I think it's unlikely that they would participate in the funding.
That's typical of any project. They have, MSBA has very strict guidelines, and they don't like to deviate from that, so town does want to do that, they need to demonstrate the need. And we did, and I think we got a lot more sped spaces at the time, because we were able to demonstrate that these were programs that you had-
Yep.
-and that needed, so.
My understanding, they would be a percent of the floor, or if they didn't have the floor, there might be a chance that previous programs were that, the general population class built there. I think they were coming. So it's not a guarantee, but-
That's interesting.
We certainly pursue it. I spoke with two people from MSBA, and they said absolutely no.
Well, the good news about that is-
But you never know.
In order to build a second floor.
I'm going to call whoever I've had talk to.
But the first floor, so that can be part of the cost, right?
But we would, I mean, once we get further in the process, we would definitely reach out and investigate it. I think it's unlikely, but there's no harm in trying.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? So in doing the work around the design, again, we had a space study committee. We had members of the town on that committee when we looked at the different options. This was what we felt was most feasible, to address the space needs at both schools. We did look at the possibility of a third site, but then you have challenges in terms of transportation, busing, and cost with that. So this appeared to be the best solution for the district. Bill and Kent from Flansburgh came and spent two days meeting with the different people that would be part of, impacted by the move. So they met with all the preschool team, they met with a facilities team, they met with the tech staff, got everybody's input. So as far as the staff's concerned, people have had a lot of feedback into what they were looking for, for space. What was the, what were the needs of the populations, the different groups? So this has sort of taken shape after those meetings, with quite a bit of input from different parties. So things like adding the nursing station. I think there was a request, Matt, that you brought from the town for having showers, shower space in the extra storage in case this building's ever used for an emergency shelter.
Yeah, that came up, I think I have searched, it came up like a year ago or something, that folks were talking about that, right? That is a good idea.
For the emergency shelters. How many of that is, like, a long way?
Yeah. So that is in the design space for where that could be added. I know, Jen, you had a question about all the classrooms having windows. There are two spaces that are landlocked spaces, but we've addressed them by making them storage areas and shifting to make sure that there is sunlight in all of the classroom spaces.
Great.
Yeah. In terms of exterior finishes, we're not there yet to even be talking about it. But we continue some of the language that's here around the building. You know, that would be, you know, that park is, we're kind of envisioning, you know, metal panel, maybe glass, you know, obviously glass, some precast space like you see, and that wraps around this building here. So those are all conversations for another day. And as Ingrid said, we did meet with the staff, and if this project does move forward, we will meet with all those people again.
Yes.
It's an ongoing process of just fine tuning an idea and a concept, so.
And you'll see in the Early Childhood Center, that multipurpose space, we had a lot of conversation about that, for where you could have a gross motor area for kids when there's rain and you can't get out to the playground. So a lot of the therapeutic needs, because again, our preschool is really driven by our requirement to provide programming for students with disabilities at that age level. So we made sure that the therapeutic spaces are built into that, and the multipurpose spaces Bill talked about. And it does, in the second floor, give us an opportunity to move the current science lab, so that we have another classroom space there, and create a bigger innovation, science, multimedia area, maker space area, project area.
That's nice.
Do you have an IEP meeting room, too? Do you have a meeting room?
We did in the preschool wing, so there's a conference room there. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Good to see you.
It's good seeing you again.
Thank you very much. So I will share the cost estimates and proposals with the town side, just so that they're aware what we're looking at as bottom-line dollars. And I'll share the draft design plans with the town, the space committee as well.
Remember, who had to use still?
Oh, we're still on me.
Yeah.
All right.
I was like, it's not me!
Okay. All right. The next thing you have in your packet, by policy, the school committee annually approves all the fundraising activities. So you have two exhibits, one from Linda Balfour, HLAD, with the proposed fundraising activities. These are really pretty much annual activities at this point, so there's not anything dramatic that you haven't seen before. They do a food drive for the food pantry, they do a hat and mitten tree around the holidays, a second food drive around the 100th day of school, Read Across America, they do a rally against cancer on opening day for the Jimmy Fund, they do the Jump Rope for Heart in May. It will be HOD's 25th birthday in January, and so they are going to do something around, fundraising around that. Artsonia is a fundraiser that the PTO is interested in, that is, basically, kids have digital portfolios of their artwork, and you can order things with their art on that. And Freeman Kennedy, again, these are pretty traditional fundraisers. The Grade 6 Promotion runs Pizzeria Uno fundraiser, Red Sox tickets, fifth, sixth grade dances. They do some restaurant fundraisers. Camp Bourndale activities to raise funds for, to supplement the cost of the Camp Bourndale program. Read Across America, Jump Rope for Heart. And then they gave you some additional information, again, about the fundraiser that PTO wants to run for Artsonia. So we need a motion. And then third in your packet, I'm sorry, you also have the anticipated fundraisers that PTO is looking to run, and those are listed by month. So again, these are all fairly traditional. The back-to-school bake sales, box-top drives, the Friends Directory, Scholastic Book Fair, the afternoon trivia, school spirit wear. They do a Parents' Night Out, food drives. They did a vendor night last year in December, bingo, Family Bingo night, a family movie night, and then they have the yearbook sales and a health wellness event at the end of the year. Which is a big fundraiser. They've done very well with that.
Which one?
The Color Fun Run.
Oh, yeah, that gets, that's a massive crowd.
Yep.
What is, what's the Bruins PTO fundraiser that's listed in November?
That's a potential one. What they've done in the past is, like the Red Sox fundraiser, where they have reserve section, and they have seats and parents go.
Providence Bruins?
I think it is the Providence Bruins. That's what they've done in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
The baby bees.
Any questions about the fundraisers? I don't know if you want to-
Did you want to ask about bingo?
Do them separately, or?
Go fan.
Do them all as a group.
Huge fan of bingo. Can spell it, too. Have to do the song every time, though. All right. So then we need, I guess we can do one massive-
I think Jennifer has it.
Jennifer has it. Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry. The only, it's really more of a comment, is the 25th anniversary for HOD. I guess I would just say to be aware that January 10th is like right after the holidays, and everyone's just been hit up with everything. So just keep in mind, which is great, we should all, you know, care and share, but just keep in mind, like, maybe if you do a fundraiser-
Timing close to the holidays.
Timing, and maybe not like a huge, huge-
Yep.
-thing, just an idea. It might seem like a lot. So that's it.
Yep. I can share that back.
We've talked about that in prior years, to kind of spread these out a little bit, because sometimes, again, there's probably going to be really front-loaded, or at the end of school year.
Well, it's the schools, it's the Girl Scouts, it's the Boy Scouts.
Right.
It's the church. It's just, to me, it gets a little overwhelming.
Okay. I'll share that back.
All right. So do we have a motion? I don't think we have to break down every single fundraiser, but to approve those fundraisers as described?
I'll make a motion to accept the fundraisers presented here tonight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on those? Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
The next thing, we have Sean Dooley here tonight. He asked for some time to talk about the Stop the Bleed campaign and share information with the committee. So, Sean?
It's good timing.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
It's sad to you for this.
In. Is this where you want me, right? Okay, all right.
I'm comfortable.
Thanks for having me in. One of the pieces of legislation and products I've been really working on right now lately is with the American College of Surgeons, is what's called the Stop the Bleed Campaign. And it's a, it's a program, basically, to couple with the AEDs that we have in all of our schools. And so what we're trying to do is get bleeding control kits placed into all the schools. So it's tourniquets, gloves, hemostatic dressings, you know, scissors, you know, the whole 90 yards, everything that can be done to actually stop a bleed in the matter, in the case of a traumatic accident, stabbing, shooting, you know, all the horrific things that we hear about, or a compound fracture, or sports injury, or someone slips and just actually gets a major cut from a piece of glass. So there's a lot of things that can be, that it can be used for. And this is, it originally was initiated after Columbine, and it didn't really catch on the recently partnered with the Department of Defense. And after the Parkland shooting, it's really sort of taken a little more traction. Based on the American College of Surgeons, seven of the children would have survived if they would have had bleeding control kits, because they weren't actually, they didn't actually die from the wound itself immediately. It was from the fact that they bled out after the fact. And if there would have been bleeding control kits there, these children would have survived. Reason the Marathon bombing was so, you know, less horrific than it could have been was the fact that it happened at the finish line, and we had so many first responders that understood how to do bleeding control, how to do, you know, apply pressure, how to pack wounds, things along those lines. And so what I've done is by taking this on and been working with Secretary Pfizer and Governor Baker, and, you know, putting it through the legislature, but I'm trying to get funding on the new School Security Act that we're putting through. So we're still trying to get that, but in order to try to, you know, get them to understand the importance a little bit more, is what I'm doing is actually proposing, I'm going[1715.32] I'm going to be personally funding Stop the Bleed kits for, you know, the entire KP district. So, you know, both King Philip schools, and then all the elementary schools in Plainfield, Rutherford, and Norfolk. Kind of to give a show of what a pilot would look like, just to show it, because it's a relatively inexpensive proposal from a statewide standpoint, it's only a couple million dollars. The American College of Surgeons is actually willing to provide all the training for free. We have several surgeons in this area that are willing to provide the training actually for our schools. And we can, you know, with the help of you guys, we can sit down and figure out who's best, whether it's, we do a training for the, it's, the actual whole training takes about an hour and a half to two hours, so it's not super intense. But depending on the schools, Pennsylvania has a pilot program going on right now, and they're mainly doing school nurses, someone from the janitorial staff, someone from the administration. So, they're trying to do, you know, and then a couple teachers, and then basically have it be, train the trainer. So, and then that way they can then continue to spread it out and help more people understand. North Carolina is doing a much more intensive program, they just started their program two months ago. They're actually putting bleeding control kits in every single classroom in the state. And so, what we're, you know, what I'm trying to do is just, all right, let's get a foot in the door and get it, you know, placed at every single AED, that way it automatically connects with 911, and there's a, there's a central place. That's what Georgia has also done. So, we would only be the third state in the country to implement this all over the place. And it's frustrating from the standpoint of, you know, we've, you know, implemented it at Logan Airport, you know, we have it at Gillette Stadium, we have it at Fenway Park, we have it at all these places where there's large volumes of people, but we're not actually having it here where we can actually protect our kids. And, and so that was, that was one of the reasons that I wanted to kind of put this forward and, you know, kind of tell you a little about, answer any questions, show you what some of the kits look like, and, and also see if you'll accept the gift of, of me providing the, providing the kits. And then we'll, you know, we'll figure out the training afterwards. But, you know, the, the Israel Ekanas has already offered to provide all the surgeons to come in and actually do, do the training, and also surgeons and trauma nurses. We did a training at the State House, we actually have American College of Surgeons are coming in tomorrow, and I'm doing a presentation with them to hopefully get this into the supplemental budget. So, it'll at least be an, at least get a pilot program for Norfolk County, but I'm hoping that I can at least get it instituted statewide, you know, sometime this year. But I kind of wanted to do this to show, all right, let's, you know, let's put our money where our mouth is. It really is a doable situation, the training's not overly intense, and it will save lives. And if, and if, you know, you know, let's pray there's never an incident that we needed at the school. At the very least, we've trained more teachers, more custodians, and, you know, let's get it involved in the health classes and being able to teach children. So, if there's later on, it's in a, you know, they're in a car accident or, or anything like that, this is, you know, this is kind of a life training, kind of like CPR, that it's very easy for, for people to understand and to do, and it will hopefully save lives. So, I just brought a couple different versions. So, basically, this is what the pack would, would be like, it would look like this, and it would just be, you know, say bleeding control kit or something like that, and it would be inside with the AEDs. This, this size fits in most of the AED cases that are around. And then inside of them would be three of the, three of the bleeding control kits. And so, inside this, you know, you can take a look at it, has a, you know, has, has the hemostatic oz, it has bandages, it has the tourniquet. Gives a basic one, two, three step process, so it really is kind of, you know, idiot proof. So, you, it's really hard to screw it up. And as, as the surgeons will tell you, you know, there's no such thing as making it too tight, because it literally will save lives. You know, it's, a tourniquet can be on for, you know, two hours. So, in, in an area like, you know, where we are, we never have to worry about something like that, where they'll be, you know, if you're in the backwoods of Montana, you might have, end up having a tourniquet on for too long, but around here, you really wouldn't. So, this is what one of these looks like. And then this is my own personal one, so this is one I just carry with, you know, with me. So, this is a little more of a, just a more of a streamlined down version and things along those lines, which we can also get, and, you know, that way you can have them, you know, whether it's out on the playground and things along those lines, if we want it, you know, hopefully, as we get the grant funding and things like that, we can institute other little packages. So, this is kind of a little mini one that has the tourniquet and the hemostatic dressing. And hemostatic dressing is, is basically clotting, you know, it has a chemical in it, so it automatically helps clot the wound to, to secure it a lot quicker. And this is, you know, we carry all these on, on the ambulances, you know, in town. So, any questions, or are you, you know, King Philip already voted to accept this, Plainfield Public Schools has already voted to accept it. Retham I need with next week.
The cost of these is about $35?
About $35 each. Each. So, so, so the, so there's three in each packet, so it's about a hundred bucks. And then each school, I think, has two AEDs.
Okay, so I was about to ask how many first-
I think I read the, in the emergency-
Plan.
Plan that each one of the schools, you know, I'm not gonna put them in the portables, but-
One at HOD?
Oh, that's it? Oh, okay.
Right by the gym, here.
We have it inside the gym here.
Inside the gym, that's it?
We have one outside the gym the whole day.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so.
One per building.
Maybe, maybe we'll do, you know, a couple extra ones, just so we have them somewhere else as well. I think the Retham schools all have, have two AEDs in each one of their elementarys, so I thought, I don't know, maybe I, I know KP has four.
So, you don't need to be certified? You train the trainer, so if someone gets trained-
You, 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 I should say, you train the trainer. It's, it's a relatively easy process. We actually have, there's a company out of Florida that's doing all the train the trainer information. It's called Blue Sphere, and it's an online training module. So, once you're basically, you know, trained, then they can, you can actually go through the online training module. It's a, it's a very, very easy process, you know. Obviously, that doesn't have the hand sign component, but you can do, and that's been certified by America Red Cross, American Council, and, and DOD. So, that's what, that's how they're rolling it out to the level of intensity that they can. But they're, they, they did a statewide training, or they did three statewide trainings in different regions, where each school sent two or three people. And that way, you have a kind of a train the trainer situation. Then everybody else can watch the video. If you're not comfortable with that, or you have questions, you at least have someone that's gone through the additional training. We'll probably implement something of that here in Massachusetts, but I'm just trying to get it, you know, and, and the surgeons are trying to just get it in as inexpensively as possible, just to kind of get our foot in the door. And that's the reason the surgeons have, and the trauma nurses have agreed to roll it out and do, you know, all the training, you know, you know, for free.
Two hours, you said, about two hours?
It's about, it's about two hours, you know. I think at the State House, it was like an hour and 45 minutes. But that included working with the dummies and-
Yeah.
You know, and it's, you know, there's a little video, which is, you know, can be, you know, can be a little gory. And, you know, I know five people during the training at the State House had to leave during the, during the, the actual video portion of it, because, you know, we were showing actual substantial, you know, bleeding situation. You know, some people are a little more squeamish when it comes to blood. But, which is, you know, just like all the other training that you do with the teachers. It's just as important to know, you know, if you'll have a bad reaction, as opposed to if you'll have a positive reaction in a, in a lockdown situation. You know, knowing how you're going to react-
Helps you plan.
Is, is, you can plan. So, if, if you know that you're gonna react a particular way to blood, then you know you're not going to be the lead person that's going to be dealing with us. And it's better to find out now than, you know, when we actually need it.
And we at both buildings have emergency medical response plans, and we have, we train annually a broad range of staff in CPR and AED, as well as first aid.
Right.
So, it would probably be that same core of staff. And we make sure we have a few people in each wing of the building that have that training.
Is this a training that I know with the CPR, for example, it's like a, like three years, is that training? Is this a training that has that same sort of end date, where you have to be recertified every certain period of time?
I honestly don't know. I mean, it's not, it's not a certification.
Right, I didn't think, you know.
It's not like, you know, you're not training. I presume we would probably, if we're getting it involved in the schools, we would probably want at least some, some level of a refresher, just to have a-
Got it.
First aid and CPR generally are both every two years.
Is it two years? I could remember what it was.
Yeah, you would probably just incorporate this in-
Into the first aid.
This is a section, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Once you understand how to do a tourniquet or pack a wound, you're not talking-
Yeah, I assume you're not gonna-
I mean, it's, it's only an hour and a half long, you know, you could probably do it really quickly in an hour, depending on the right side of the crowd, from beginning to end. A refresher is, you know, maybe another five, five, 10 minutes, be like, all right, remember you need to do this, and remember to mark down the time, so the surgeon remember, you know, will know how long it's been marked. Just some simple walk through it again. Oh, yeah, 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 I remember how to, how to do this.
Okay.
But yeah, I don't, it's, this isn't a certified, you know, course, like there's not a-
Licensor.
It's not like, you know, American Red Cross, you know, lifeguard or CPR, where you have to be recertified.
Okay.
Do the kits have a shelf life? Do they have to, no? So, they don't have to be replaced every few years or?
No, I was just, the, I'd have to ask the, you know, the manufacturer of the hemostatic dressing. The only thing in it that has anything that would have any half-life whatsoever would be the chemical, the clotting chemical, you know, but it's, if you look in, in that thing, it's, it's, you know, it's sealed in a super, you know, you know-
Vacuum packed.
Vacuum packed, sealed, you know, and, and, you know, they, that's the same stuff they use on medical trauma units in combat. So, it's, it's the actual same thing, except it's right instead of-
It says five years.
So, it has all the, five years?
Five years.
Okay, five years.
So, we have to replace the bandages after that?
Five years. And the bandage is, by, it's-
We'll give you a call in five years.
Yeah, exactly. I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to do it. The bandages are ninety, seventy-five, seventy-five percent of the, the cost is the tourniquet.
Yeah.
Because that, because it's, it's a military-grade tourniquet.
Yeah.
And so, that, I think, out of the $35, I think 27 of it is the actual tourniquet. The rest is pretty inexpensive.
Great.
I think it's a great idea. As a teacher, I would be comfortable having it. I know in Boston, I believe, was it Greg Newsbaum, or, or, he was saved because somebody made a tourniquet, his, you know?
Oh, during the-
During the bombing, yeah. So, I mean, there's, so I think it's-
I, I think they said five or six people actually came to the hospitals with the, with the tourniquet, actually. And, and then, you know, there's always the famous picture of the-
Yeah, Carlos.
The cat, you know, the cat.
Yeah, that's, I think that's-
You know, actually holding it, because he actually knew what he was doing. He's actually part of the organization, and so he's gonna be one of our spokespeople. If we're able to roll this out in Massachusetts, he's already agreed. He's like, hey, I'm happy, you know, happy to use, you know, my cele-, you know, quote unquote, celebrity, to, you know, to help, you know, get, you know, get a little more traction.
Sean, do you know what the cost of the smaller kits are?
Uh, the small kits, almost the same price.
Okay, that, which is about $35?
Yeah. I'm able to get the big cat package because the manufacturer is, I actually know the owner of the company.
Okay.
And so, he's like, listen, as long as we do none of the fancy stuff, he's like, you know, the Velcro and the, you know, they both have the same tourniquet, so the big chunk of it-
Yeah, got it, okay.
It's the, it's the cloth and the, you know, whereas, whereas just going in in a simple bag, you know, clear plastic bag.
Right.
Yeah.
He's like, you know, that, that saves you seven bucks.
Right.
And so, that's where the, the major cost is involved in that. But yeah, you can buy it, and you can buy them, and you can look around online. I think that one cost me $35, but you can just get it on Amazon. There's a lot of different versions out there. There's some with cheaper tourniquets. I can get the price down about seven, seven or, seven to $10 with another tourniquet.
Yeah.
But I don't, first responders all know this one. It's, it's, it's used in, it's the same one used on, by combat medics. And so, it's like, you know, maybe it's a little bit of Kleenex marketing, you know, that, you know, but it's, everybody knows it, and you don't have to worry about it. So, there might be one that's just as good for less money, but the price point is so, you know, so small that I, I personally wouldn't-
Right.
-bother doing that.
And it's one size fits all.
One size fits all, yeah. Yeah, because it's just a, it's just a Velcro strap.
Didn't know if it was a child.
Yeah, no, it did, no, it can, goes all the way down to, you know, this big. And, you know, and there are certain, you know, and the reason we put three in a pack is, you know, one, you know, God forbid you need all three of them, but a lot of times, depending on the, where the laceration is, you know, you might sometimes have to put two in, just because you can't, you know, you're not able to get, you know, for whatever reason, how, how it's bleeding, how deep it is and everything like that. So, you might have to put one on, and you still can't ratchet it down enough, so you'd have to put one directly above it and, and do a, do a secondary to get, you know, to get the bleeding to stop.
Okay, so we would need a vote to accept the gift. So, would anyone like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept the gift by Representative Dooley, on behalf of the schools, for the Stop the Bleed kit.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
No, I was gonna say, hopefully, hopefully this will spur the secretary to get this on, because I'm just, we've been working on it for months now, and they have this $100 million, and this is only a couple million of it. And I'm like, let's, let's get this rolling, it, you know, this, you know, I'm, I'm just paranoid that there'll be a situation where, oh, if we only had this, we could have saved this kid's life. Anyway, and I'm not even talking a traumatic incident, just something, you know, a silly slip and fall sort of situation.
Is the bill to, so the bill is just to have the state accept this practice and start doing funding?
No, the bill is actually a funding bill, because otherwise it would be an unfunded mandate to the schools and-
We love those.
How's the funding work at each of the different districts?
This would be, it's, it's going to be paid for out of the Department of Education, State Department of Education.
So, each district would go out and source their own?
No, it would, it would be done sourced at a, at a statewide level, and then it would be distributed to the, to each, each school district, based on, you know, all right, we need-
Roll mirrors.
I, I'm sure we'll come up with a formula that would probably be based on the number of children, you know, or, or AEDs, you know, we'll, we'll play around with, you know, a different, I'm very flexible for however. So, there's a bill, there's a piece of legislation, which I'm still pushing and working through, but the quicker avenue is through the Governor's School Safety Grant program that he, you know, we set aside $100 million, you know, purely to do school safety and school security. And so, we're trying to implement in that, into that aspect, so that way it'll automatically get rolled out, and it doesn't go through all the rigmarole of the legislative process and earmarks. And, you know, and, you know, I want 500 for my school and, you know, you know, none for your school. That, I'll get rid of all that nonsense, is, you know, what we're hoping for. And so, we have a, we have a, I probably shouldn't say this is on, since we're on TV, but we, we're in talks of having it hopefully in the next supplemental budget. So, that means it would actually be funded this year, which would be huge. So, that's what we're, you know.
Good.
The secretary's on board, the governor's on board, and I think it's just, I'm sure there's, you know, there's $100 million, and I'm sure there's $200 million worth of, you know, really good projects. So, but this is one that, the nice thing about this one is it's a relatively small amount of money, and it covers every single school in the Commonwealth. So, I mean, that makes it a, a little more beneficial.
Will we receive a call because our AED cabinets are alarmed, so we'll-
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, we-
They'll bring them to us, so you can put them in.
All right, give the fire department something to do, you know, let them drive around and come visit. Yeah, no, all that, and that's the reason we wanted to put them in the fire, in the AED, in the AED cabinets, because they're all already, all, all of them in our district are centralized, central alarmed, so that automatically, once the cabinets open, you know, whether it's for this or whatever, they, it automatically trips the alarm and sends an ambulance here immediately. So, we don't even have to waste the time, you know. Still wanna call 911, that's still part of the protocol.
Yeah.
But hopefully, you know, the alarm sounds at, at the station, and they get the ambulance rolling, you know, within, you know, 30 seconds of their, you know, of the cabinet being opened.
Great, awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
This is fun, this is the first time I've been back since I-
Next month, we'll have another school committee alumni.
The table is always, we always, we always used to face this way.
That's right.
You guys are rebels.
It's more pleasing aesthetically this way, yes, that's where we're going for it.
You can see the smart board is what it really is, instead of everybody having to get up. That's right.
Thanks again.
Thank you. The next thing that I had in your packet today was about the curriculum cycle, review cycle. So, several years ago, the school committee adopted a formal review cycle, and the, the intent of that is twofold, is it gives us the opportunity to look at our curriculum for each of the core disciplines once every five or six years, and it also helps us budget appropriately for new curriculum adoption and implementation. This year, we were scheduled, 2018, 19, to review the social studies curriculum. I'm suggesting that we revise the curriculum review cycle. On this last page of your packet, you'll see the, the proposed changes. The state just adopted new curriculum frameworks for social studies in June, and they've just been released. The, one of the other challenges is the scope and sequence for the sixth grade is based on a two-year curriculum, so sixth and seventh, so we really need to work with KP on how we're gonna divide that up. So, we need to do some preparation this year in, in unpacking the new frameworks, looking at what we have in place, identifying where there are gaps, and working out with KP how we're each going to tackle the new standards, before we're really ready to do the review. In addition, we've talked a lot about and would like to review our social emotional learning programs. So, our anti-bullying programs, our digital citizenship, our open circle program. And it, it makes more sense to take a look at that this year and do social studies next year. So, I'm proposing we add the review of the social emotional learning curriculum this year, and the anti-bullying curriculum, and then move the social studies review to 2019, and then everything bumps back one, one year from there. We're in great shape. All of our core curriculum's been reviewed in the last few years. We have a new, new programs for ELA, for both writing and for reading. We have a brand new math curriculum this year. We've been working on updating our science curriculum. So, we have all research-based current programs in the core disciplines. And I think, as I said, if we have this year in the core disciplines, and I think, as I said, if we have this year to prepare for the social studies review, it'll be much more impactful next year. So I'm looking for a motion for the committee to adopt the revised curriculum review cycle. It's dated 10/9/18 at the bottom with those changes. Any questions?
We have a motion on that, to accept the curriculum change as suggested?
I'll make a motion to accept the curriculum changes as proposed.
Second?
Second.
Is, just a quick question. So, so science they reviewed this year, so that pushed us back, is there any concern, I know I'm going ahead a few years, like, say, ELA, for instance, we have that scheduled, does the state have any other pending reviews that would then cause that to potentially shift, or we just don't know?
The, most of the frameworks are fairly current, but, but if we were to make adjustments, if there's a new set of standards released, I don't think it would necessarily trigger a full curriculum review. It might trigger some adjustments to the curriculum, and we do that annually. We have standing curriculum committees that are working on writing and revising curriculum every year. It's just that every five years, we take a step back, we look at student achievement data, we look at the new research, we determine, does this still meet our needs. But we make ongoing changes as, as the standards are updated or frameworks are changed.
So the state having done the social studies, that was more of a one-off?
That was a comprehensive review, and it's actually significantly different than the past. So the content and the scope and sequence is very different than, than the old frameworks were.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last thing in your packet is just an update from the BIKO Collaborative. We are members of BIKO, and the collaborative is sending quarterly updates to the member districts. We did welcome two new districts into the collaborative this year, Hope Dale and Uxbridge. So we now have nineteen member districts. BIKO is in financially really good shape. We have started open school with two hundred and students, two hundred and twenty students compared to a hundred and ninety-five last year, so we have an increase in student enrollment. We opened two new programs with BIKO. One is a specialized early learning center at a new facility in Walpole, and they also opened a language-based program at the Martin School in North Attleboro. There is a strategic plan in place, so you have some updates on some of the work that the collaborative has done towards their strategic plan. I think the biggest thing that they've been really targeting is professional development and offering professional development to teachers in all of their member districts. They did a lot of sheltered English immersion training, which was a requirement of the state, so they tried to bring in training that meets the needs, common needs of member districts, and that's been a great resource for us. Any questions about the collaborative?
Nope. Anything? Good. Okay.
That's all I have.
Moving back to me, should be a really quick report, as I was unable to complete my homework assignment and get the evaluation to Pam to be typed up nicely. So we'll move the superintendent evaluation. That will actually be on November's agenda, so I apologize. It just worked very much got away from me this month. And I will have my homework done next time, I promise. Sorry?
Detention.
I know, detention. Pam already yelled at me, it was a whole thing. Right on a board, it was weird. All right, so moving on to committee reports, King Philip?
Okay. I gave a report on the last meeting that we had, but the one in September, I was not able to attend. In this past meeting, the King Philip has undertaken a survey around school start times. They surveyed parents and staff, and they're kind of collecting the results, but I think it's, you know, the update is really just to share with you that they're, they're looking into this. The question was raised about how they're going to align with the different districts, and that's still up in the air a little bit, because if they push the high school kids back a little bit, there would be, you know, some conflict with the surrounding towns' elementary schools. There'd be bus conflicts. There'd also be, I think, you know, expected parent conflicts, too, because not everybody would agree to this, because a lot of older kids take care of the younger kids when there's a family arrangement like that. So they're really just, on the surface, looking into this to get an understanding of what's going on and where are people's interests. Which is interesting, and I wonder if, you know, if we shouldn't undertake that type, same type of survey at some point.
We could certainly look into it. I know they are, as you said, they're interested. It's been a subject that's come up quite a bit, and they're interested in exploring the research, you know. Teenagers need more sleep, and there are districts that have considered changing the start time and bringing kids in later. But as Paul said, there's a lot of challenges with that, because we share busing with KP, so we share the same buses. They complete their routes and then do the elementary, so you'd have a financial impact in terms of busing. There are several districts that implemented the later start time and then went back to the earlier, earlier starts. As you said, for a lot of families, they rely on the older students for childcare. There are also a lot of teenagers that work, so there's that challenges, and then there's athletic sports challenges as well. So what we, I did meet with the other two, other three superintendents, and Paul Zinni mentioned that they were going to explore to see whether there's significant interest. If there is significant interest, then all three of the elementaries would have to be part of that, that study process.
Be quite an undertaking.
Yep.
Also, at the, at the last meeting, Paul Zinni reviewed his goals for the coming year. They also, he also reviewed a new communication tool that they have. It's a KP news blog, which is interesting. It's, and I may get this a little bit wrong, but I believe it's linked to their Facebook page, but it is a way to get communication out in a lot more efficient, seamless way. And it also helps to bring people into the Facebook page to see broader updates, as well as it gives the opportunity for some of the clubs that are less prevalent to get their names out there through the same type of blog. So it's an interesting concept. I was looking at it this week, because it just launched within the past week, and, you know, it's-
Do you subscribe to it, or?
It's off of their main page.
So you have to click on it?
And I can share it with a group if you want. I can send the link out to everybody. But it's on their, you'll see it on the banner of their main page.
Sounds like Slack. It's like Slack.
What's that?
Slack. That sounds like Slack.
Slack.
It's like a, to me, it's-
It's a communication tool for a shared group of people, all that.
Okay.
You just can post stuff.
Yeah, they are using a company to do that.
Yeah.
Something. I was going to mention that Representative Dooley came to the KP meeting to pitch the bleed kits, but he's already done that here. We also approved the budget calendar, and they did a FY18 year-end report out of their financials, and through a number of different things, they ended up, you know, I think fairly well in the black at the end of eighteen. So that's all for an update. Oh, one other update is, I am no longer able to continue as the KP liaison from the Norfolk School Committee. So I apologize, but I kind of foresaw this when I put myself out there in June. But it's, you know, between work and family life and other commitments, I'm not able to do it any longer. So we'll need to find someone else on the committee to step up and take my place.
And the expectation really is to attend at least one meeting a month, is that the, I know they have two meetings, but I think they look to have the reps at least attend one meeting a month. And it is a voting position, so they need, they do rely on having somebody from each committee, because they need that for a quorum. They either have, they either have to have the elected Norfolk rep or the elementary rep to, at the meeting for, to have a quorum. So. One other thing I was just going to mention, I did attend an event last week that KP launched. It's the beginning of the work, so if people aren't interested in getting involved, they are looking to pursue a federal grant for, to help address alcohol abuse and opiate abuse in teenagers. And the federal grant is upwards of a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year to put prevention programs and resources in place. The grant is available for five years and renewable once, so you can get a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year for five years, and then you can renew it for an additional five years. In order to apply for the grant, they have to put together a community coalition, which has representatives from local churches, law enforcement, parent groups, that gather some data about prevalence rates and issues in the area, what people's concerns are, and are part of shaping the plan for intervention. Paul Zinni had had this grant in Avon, and they've had it for nine years, and they reduced their percentages of alcohol by almost forty percent, like, had a significant impact. So they're looking to get that up and running. They had the initial meeting to talk about what the coalition's responsibilities would be on October third, and they're going to be scheduling follow-up meetings from there. So that was a great start.
Hmm, interesting. So I guess we could put on the, give everyone a chance to think about it, but for next month, we'll have to figure out KP rep. I know for myself, there's a possibility of that I'm going to be doing something else for the town, and that commitment on top of everything else, I wouldn't, I would not be able to do it. So just to put that out there. I don't want to, I'm not trying to be secretive what this, it just, it's not official, so I don't want to say what that is at this point. But, anyway, just something everybody think about that. I know we already thought about this once, but if we can somehow pull something together.
What are the days, like, is it a Tuesday night? Is it a Monday night? I mean, there's just some nights that I-
It's a Monday night.
Monday nights.
It's a Monday night?
Yeah, twice a month. But again, I think the expectation is at least one month.
Right, right, right. No, I'm just thinking about dance. That's what I'm just, what time do we get out of dance? I don't remember.
Your dance career?
Not me.
I just have a lot of eggs in that basket.
Yeah, we'd ask about the rotating position, which unfortunately isn't not feasible.
Right, no, I remember-
And men their bylaws, they have to go to all three town meetings.
What times do you start, Paul? Their meetings?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, seven.
Are they usually over, like?
They usually run longer, right, than ours typically?
I think they're streamlining them a little bit.
They have, yeah, from what I've heard, they're, and I didn't go to them one last year. But they're, Paul Zinni is making, I think, some good changes already.
Okay.
He seems like a very, a high-quality person, and he's pushing things along, in a good way. So.
Yeah, so hopefully we sort it out. So as I said, I, I wouldn't mind doing, just I don't think I can, and I don't want to, I mean, I know Paul had some hesitation when he initially did, so he thought what eventually happened would happen, and that, that's the case. So I, I don't want to put us in the same spot where then, December, hey, we're having this conversation again, where I can't do it, so, you know, that type of thing. So, so everybody, just think it over, if we can pull something off, hopefully we figure it out by next month.
Just get a little more details for, yeah.
And I'd be happy to reach out to Paul if anybody wanted to go and meet with him and, and kind of talk about what the responsibilities are, what he sees as the goals, if that's helpful in making the decision. I'm sure he'd be happy to do that. They've been, I have to say, they've really been great partners to work with this year.
All right, so that's it for King Philip then, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. King, or, I'm sorry, Policy?
So, Policy, we reviewed the community use of school facilities and resources. There were some feedback from the folks in the office. There've been some conflicts. So we'll actually have a first reading. We're going to take some feedback from the office folks. Ingrid will incorporate that as a first draft, that we'll have as a first reading for November. Also have some language around start and end times, some clarification on that. The conflicts really are Norfolk groups and-
Out-of-town groups, right?
What's that?
Out-of-town groups?
Yeah, and when you can actually have bumping, you can't bump someone randomly, it has to be open space, so clarify that. Also, is it, the user groups, the hourly fees?
Yeah, we, in the past, haven't rented the facilities if it was a no-school day, if we were closed for professional development, or if it was an early release. But in looking at it, we've decided that we can make the facilities available, but, but we need to redefine that those, there's not necessarily custodian on duty. So there are custodial fees. If it's a no-school day, the guys come in early and they work the regular school day. So on no-school days or early-release days, that would be outside of the core hours, and groups that are interested in renting would have to pay a custodial fee.
So we'll have those chains available. We also reviewed or discussed the student costs and fees. We're going to do some research associated with that about collections. Make some decisions on that. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Ingrid?
No, I think we'll.
We reviewed a new policy, the educational opportunities for military children. That's a new policy from, a new mask model policy. We didn't have any changes, so we're going to recommend that for a first reading in November. Similarly, education opportunities for children in foster care, and we didn't have any changes for that, so we're going to recommend that also for a first reading in November. And we were scheduled to review the meal charge policy, but we did not get to that, so we're just going to table that for next month. And that's it for Paul.
Did you have a question on the, the facilities portion? Do we have any language in the policy now that essentially is a, because I kind of got semi-involved in the tail end of this as far as out-of-town organizations and such, like a timeline? Because I guess one of the questions that came up is a group from out of town rented a facility essentially right after their time would have ended, so, and then when a person in town was looking to get the facility, which would have been plenty of time probably, it had already been rented, and so they were kind of wondering, okay, if I'd only done this six months in advance, what did I even think about asking about a winter sport, for example? Is there anything, we don't have any language in there right now. Does that make sense when I'm asking?
Yes. So what we're going to do, and we talked about, talked about it a little bit in policy, what we have done in the past, we originally, when we first started renting the gym, said that no group could, we, the policy wouldn't allow people to book earlier than three months prior to their event. And that was mostly driven by the rec department, because they have first say, and they book all their events, and they didn't have their spring catalog out, so it was, it was a three-month cap. The problem we had was any group, like CYO, that wants to run a basketball, they want to book for the season. They don't want to book the first two games and then maybe have to move locations. So we took out the three months, and people are allowed to book for the full calendar year. But in the revisions, what we're going to talk about is that once we open registration for the year, it'll be around mid-August, and then you can book for the entire year at that time. So the timeline will be clearer in the revisions of the policy. So rec does their, now rec does their full calendar for the year over the summer. Once they give it to us, and we book all the things, then we'll open it for, for groups. It'll be mid-August, and you can book for the entire-
What's the typical process, so anyone who rents, or rents continuously, or do we follow up with them the following years, like, hey, are you still interested in this? Or we slowly wait for them to contact us?
We wait for them to contact us. Yeah. And we are also going to put into the policy that if we have multiple groups that submit in the same timeline for an open space, and there are multiple Norfolk groups, that we will allocate nights in a way that's even, because we've had that situation where we have football, or we had futsal, softball, and CYO all wanting the same space. They're all Norfolk groups, so we tried to divide it in a way that's equitable. But we'll clean that language up as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we have a school partner renewal, which is CPAC. So do we have a motion to accept CPAC's partner renewal status?
Like a motion to accept the CPAC partner renewal.
Do we have a second on that one?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are looking at, I'm sorry, we need to approve minutes for the September 11th meeting, excuse me. So I think, was everybody here, or did-
I wasn't here.
Paul's absent, so we'll have four of us. So flip through that real quick, and then if we have a motion to accept those meetings from the September 11th meeting, please.
I make a motion to accept minutes from the September 11th meeting?
Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me.
And then we are scheduled for our next meeting to be November 13th. How's that look for everybody?
That's good to me.
We go 13th? Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.